Good afternoon, this is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Athens City Planning Commission, scheduled May 17, 2007, it is 2:30 PM, and all of the members of the commission are present. We take sworn statements. If you're trying to say anything to do, would you stand and raise your hand? Do you affirm or swear that you will tell the truth? Whatever you say is the truth. Okay. So, we've done that? Thank you. And, no, you didn't do a good job on the pictures. You're supposed to erase my wrinkles so I can see them.
That was a girl's.
She took that one. So, it wasn't your fault. The first case is number lot 7, lot 6, which is a minor lot split for Ed Renzelli and Mark Spazza. Did you want to say anything? Just, hold on.
Hi, John, I would like to start on the first unit for the property.
Yes, we did.
And have a good look at it. And, uh, your input, I guess.
Okay. Who wants to input something? We did go out, we took a field trip. Ray wasn't with us, but he's seen it before, I'm sure, so, but Rick and, um, all the rest of us, were there? And a young lady from the Post was there also, and Steve. Okay. Okay, did anybody have any questions after our trip yesterday? I can't find my piece of paper. Here it is.
Well, Steve, because I requested him to make sure.
Oh, did you? Oh. You asked him? No, okay, go ahead, Steve.
My name's Steve Pierce, I'm zoning administrator for the city of Athens. At the last planning commission meeting, it was requested that I do an appraisal of the width-to-depth ratio on the lots. You should have a copy of either a memo or a letter that I wrote. It explains the technique that's used to determine width-to-depth ratio, and then it takes that technique and specifically applies it to this case. So, then a day or two after that, I had it completed, and that should have been forwarded to you. Each of them, to boil it all down, each of them does comply. They're under. I think the lot that was the longest was, I don't know, like 2.87 to 1, just under 3 to 1, but was under the 3 to 1 requirement.
Yeah, track 1.
And then I evaluated each of the others also.
Okay. Thank you. This was what you want, just to review in my own mind. What you're trying to do is, you're not going to develop this, you want to just sell this off, that you want to have it.
That's correct. We're planning on having that for sale. Hopefully, within the next few months, probably somewhere toward the end of July. And, you know, again, we were hoping that we'd be able to get a lot approval from the planning commission, as well as the approval on the curb cut that was asked for on lot number 1. Again, the way I envision this is that ultimately, the planning commission will be dealing with the developer, whoever it is. And if the planning commission determines that, you know, they only need a 30-foot curb cut, then that would be your determination. Right now, we're asking for, what would be a typical curb cut, a 50-foot curb cut, which I would think would be the maximum. The developer would be sure, depending on what he was putting in, that he would have the latitude to have it up. But as I said, ultimately, I believe that the planning commission, force the council will make the determinations beyond that as the place comes up.
Do you, anybody have, want to have any motion they want to put on the floor to discuss this, or you just want to discuss it first?
Well, I just want to clarify that the planning commission doesn't approve curb cuts.
Mine. Curb cuts, well, that's true.
We're just doing a split of the property, and this property, as I recall, I've still never totally. Was railroad property purchased by Mr. Renzelli, or is it still owned by somebody else, because it listed as a 25-foot easement?
The, um, the actual railroad property is 100 feet wide and probably about 1,400 feet long.
Right.
The rail bed itself lays in the southern portion of that property. And when Mr. Renzelli bought the property, there was a maintenance easement that CSX owns or owned, which was part of the property. So, to have 100 foot that he purchased, and then another 25-foot maintenance easement to maintain that property, what we've done is we've taken that 25 foot, and we've added another 25 foot to it, to create 50-foot easement there for road access, utility access, et cetera. That will remain private until whatever developers identify, and will then ultimately decide whether that's going to be a private road or public road.
Right. But all, but all 50 feet is owned then by Mr. Renzelli?
That's our understanding.
Okay. Okay, well, I would make a motion then to approve the lot split as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second it for purposes of discussion. Now discussion?
Now discussion. Before we vote.
I can't vote for this lot split unless we have some condition that will require a maintenance or an access road that will serve all five lots, and not just an easement, but that the lots, some way of restricting development there until an access road is built, because that is not an area, well, for the first place, that's going to be an area that rapidly develops more business, according to the comprehensive plan, and according to the things that are happening out there anyway. That's not an area where we need more and more access to the highway, exits to the highway. We really need to have the exits to the highway controlled as much as possible. And I think that the potential of having even two or three more exits there is a really, that's a bad place to have them. That one curb cut that's already there, that's across from Della Drive, is fine, and that would be a way to get to an access road. The curb cut that's across from Della Drive that already exists on Lot 2?
It's a curb cut.
That, yeah, that's fine, and that would be a way to get to an access road that would parallel the highway on the south, that would access those five lots. But I think there needs to be a restriction on the lot split that would say that that road has to be built before any development can happen on any of those lots.
And what would, what would one do if you had different owners? For example, someone bought Lot 1 and wanted to develop Lot 1, and you had another owner who bought Lot 2, 3, 4, 5? You would marry those two owners together with?
There'd have to be some sort of a property owner's agreement or something for that.
And you've indicated that you don't want any more access to, I think you called it the highway, but do you actually mean East State Street?
East State Street, yes, yeah. I'm thinking of the speed at which people drive on it, it's a, but it isn't the, yes, it's not the actual.
It is an actual, it's actually 35 mile an hour.
Yeah, I know. And, and most other people know it, but that.
Which, no one pays attention to.
But it's, but considering that you have the potential of people coming out of Della Drive and down off the real highway, and coming back underneath the bypass, it's, there just is too much traffic coming from different directions there, to have extra curb cuts coming out from the south, I think, on East State Street.
So, I understand what you're saying, you are not going to grant a curb cut or access to?
We can't grant a curb cut.
Or? Well, who actually grants that curb cut for access to Lot 1, to actually access East State Street? And, so it's not a decision of the planning committee, it's a decision of the city service director, is that correct?
That's right. However, we can decide not to grant the lots, not to approve the lot splits if there isn't a concrete plan for an access road that serves all five lots. Not being a lawyer, I don't know how you tie it to the deeds, but it, it needs to be a condition of the, of the lot split, so that those lots won't be developed without some sort of parallel to East State Street access.
Yeah, I think one other thing that would be important is the property owner, the potential property owners also need to know that the availability of sewer is that it could be available. It is not currently available. I mean, there's no sewer line that runs back through there. I mean, we've talked about ways that it can be accomplished, but it's not currently in place.
How is the, isn't, out on Columbus Road, there's an access road, isn't there, that goes along, and all the property owners operate off that, but they don't all own the lot? I mean, who owns the road? You know what I'm talking, where are the Sears and all that?
I think that's actually Circle Drive.
Is that, is that originally?
It was platted, but it was never developed.
Isn't Columbus Road right away?
But they don't have access to Columbus Road, they have access to that to get to Columbus Road.
Right.
So, it works.
Yeah, and that road was originally installed, there was drainage on Columbus Road for each of the lots. However, the administration at that time made a determination that the safest way to access those lots would be at just one access point. So, you're correct, that's.
It's the same principle, yeah.
In that case, though, the development of the road is actually on platted right away.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I think there needs to be some, some similar plating for this. And I realize that these lots, especially the 4 and 5, are very small, and if you take away anything else from them, they're, it's going to be hard to build anything on them. But I think that it's just going to be very dangerous to have separate developments out there. If you have somebody who wants to buy all five lots and build something on all five lots, and use the Lot 2 curb cut, fine, but.
Well, I think one of the, excuse me, but I think one of the goals of Mr. Renzelli was to actually be able to sell Lot 1 as a separate lot, and then potentially look at selling the other four lots as a unit. But you would like to have Lot 1 as having the freedom of their own private access and not be tied into the other development or the other four lots.
In that case, there's a possibility of splitting Lot 1 and Lot 2, and making 2 be 2, 3, 4, and 5. Combine 2, 3, 4, and 5 into a Lot 2, and just split it off from Lot 1, so you've got just two lots there. Then all you need is to get a curb cut for Lot 1.
That's what.
Because you've got the curb cut for Lot, for the other lot.
Yes, that's what we're looking at, is the potential that the developer could come in, purchase all four of the lots, Lot 2, 3, 4, and 5.
But he also could come in and purchase all four of those lots and build four things on them.
He could, but there is, and again, there has to be that access road on Lot 2, 3, 4, and 5, because there is no access on East State Street from those lots. The point being with Lot number 1, it could potentially sell to a separate investor or separate property owner that would need access to East State Street and not through a neighbor's property, or a neighbor's lot.
But you could come in through the curb cut on Lot 2 and turn right and go to Lot 1.
Well, he actually can't, because if you look at the plaque, his, his property doesn't go to that curb cut, it ends before that curb.
And what the planning commission has said, and what we've said, I don't know how many times we've said it to you, is the odds of a curb cut on Lot 1 are slim and none, because there's one at Della, and then there's one at the Columbia Gas property. You'd be bunching three, three curb cuts very close together on what we consider a very hot, busy street.
Well, you know, again, the planning commission will make, you know, the determination they need to make. I will, you know, again, pass this information on to Mr. Renzelli, who unfortunately isn't here. And I would also like to inform the planning commission that there will be probably an additional request by the Holzer Dock property, which is currently being split into three lots, and they, as well, are probably going to be asking for curb cuts. Again, these are individual decisions made by individual property owners. They'll be requesting an additional two curb cuts for each of the lots that they're subdividing with 15 acres into.
They want to waste their time, let them waste their time.
That's, they understand that, and, you know, they've gone through the process of surveying the properties, and we'll get that proposal if I can, if I can, within the next month.
Steve?
I just want to add a little bit of clarification to the question that you'd ask out on Columbus Road. That parallel access road is actually on platted right-of-way, previously existing right-of-way, not on private property. The prop, the entire property was in the same ownership, and that owner made the proposal to develop the road and subdivide the lots. So, in a way, it's kind of the same, it's kind of different, but there was that proposal upfront by the owner of all lots to develop that road to one access point, and then turn that over to the city as a public road. So, there was a little more concrete plan on that. Could be similar to, to the situation with the proposed Holzer Clinic. They have the same situation there, and it's at the point where there's additional work that needs to be done by them to install a parallel access road. And I think they have a fairly concrete proposal that they presented as to how they intend to develop that road, and then possibly turn that road over to the city as a public road. So, three similar situations, each with its own different kind of thing going on, but all with the thing, with the one thing in common, and that's traffic management. Traffic management is the most basic idea, no matter how it's accomplished.
Thank you. Well, and when you go to big cities, to malls and things, there'll be a road. Oh, it used to be, I haven't been there a long time, but along Hamilton Road, there used to be another road you could go along, and they don't come out on Hamilton, and so it can be done, even though, doesn't matter who owns it, or how many people own it, it still seems to me it could be done to manage the traffic safely. Okay.
Still a motion?
We still have a motion on the floor, yes. Do you have any other?
No, I just wanted to get it resolved. I think we've stated what the planning commission wants to see.
Well, we.
I don't think the motion has much of a chance of passing.
I don't think it does, but we have to, it's on the floor, I have to call, someone has to call for the vote, and I assume you answered a question, a question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. I mean, no.
How did you, how did you present that? How did you present it?
No, there was a motion for approval.
Okay, all right.
I seconded it for purposes of discussion, and then I.
All right. All right. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay, we're all opposed. So, you'll have to, I think, take that back, and are you want to discuss it with Mr. Renzelli? What is? Well, I mean, you, he, you're going to have to discuss it with him. We say that we want to see the, a road, some, something set up, so there would be a road connecting all those, and only one curb cut. And you say that one is to be different from the others, where actually, I think, one could work out some way so that their access was through the same thing, but that would be up to him, what he would like to have, or you, we want to have some, one, one curb cut and an access road. I think that's right, right?
Yes.
Okay. What he wants to do, yeah, okay. Thank you. Do you have any other questions or anything? No? The next case is 0708. This, Mr. Rep has asked for final approval of a PUD for Brandy, or you just call it Gran.
Brandy.
Bron. Okay. Yeah.
I'd like to point out, I'd like to point out.
Okay. Do you swear that you're going to tell the truth, or affirm, swear, or affirm? Okay. All right, this is a request for final approval. Bron, because I don't like that. Okay. We have before us a number of items here. Get all this down here. It's very heavy. I actually sat down last night and read most of it, but some of the stuff was so tiny, I couldn't see it. And I couldn't find my magnifying glass, so I may have to ask you a question. We did have, we took a field trip yesterday. Oops. You're going to have to resubmit it, because there's a misspelling on the front of this page. Right here.
Oh, yeah.
You went all over.
Well, commotion, that sounds like us.
Sorry. I told you I couldn't see the little print, so I could see the big print, though.
Another one, there was a 50-inch right-of-way. I forget what page it was on now. That's why I don't like the symbols.
Well, some of the things in the packet were the preliminary and others, so.
Yeah, so they're all.
Really, the map that was presented is the request for final, because even at the.
Yeah, because this is to be changed. I didn't read it.
When we looked, Lance, you were talking about a, I called it a retaining wall, you didn't, but a wall that kind of surrounded. And I don't know if that's, that's red line on here, or what?
Sure, a red line on it.
Yeah, that's a red, red line.
Yeah, actually. And from talking with John, that's really a decorative kind of safety wall through the backs of the driveways.
How tall is it?
I didn't bring mine, I left them at home. I left them at home, I looked, and I'll look at it.
This actually, here is supposed to be a fence with plantings in front of it, more to the buildings, because these are the garages back in here.
Right.
And you then will have view coming up the road, so that's what that is. This in here will be more of a retaining wall. It'll have, the best way I could explain it is something like a mini Lombard Street, you know, in San Francisco, and, you know, Lombard has all those nice flowers and that is coming down. That's kind of what we thought we could do there, we need the retaining wall, but we could do something with plantings in front of it, maybe a water feature or something.
It still didn't look like enough room for buildings in there to me.
We were having some difficulty.
It looked like there wasn't enough room for everything that needs to go in there with.
Well, they, right now, you know, the lack of the better, I think, plant, it's a hill.
Right.
What we're going to do is take the top off, so that now you have a flat zone, and that's what the building is.
There will, when we get on.
Well, because, because when you showed it, just, it looked like it was just all going to be right here, and it looked like there wasn't enough room.
Where's that detailed, I guess? In these, or is it in the stormwater?
Uh, right.
Push this over here a little bit more.
In here, these are all the proposed elevations, these spots here, and the dash lines are the existing elevations.
Okay. The dash, like this is 730, 750.
That's the proposed, the solid, solid.
Right now, it's 750 and 730.
750.
That's right on that.
Right, that was the tallest part of there.
But this was, this was long in here, wasn't it, that we thought it didn't look like there was enough room at this end?
This is going to be, we are awaiting the results of this slope stability study to know how we can grade this out, and it very well may require retaining structure here.
Sometimes this evening, John, when you drive through there, is, this road is not exactly on the ground.
Yeah, I know, you were coming up, but it still looked like, I went, you said there'd be a wall there, and it looked like we were right on top of that road there practically.
We don't have to wait and see what the slope stability study says before we give final approval?
Well, if the slope stability study doesn't come out right, the approval is no good, because you can't do it. So, it's sort of like, I think, from what I understand in talking with the ownership, was that they were proceeding with the slope stability.
Correct.
Items, and I had the impression it wasn't that far away from completion.
I know the drilling is done, I go over to the cross-sections Monday. Yeah, it was Monday, Monday or Tuesday. And he needed that to complete his analysis, so we're hoping next week.
Because usually, then, we would, because it's, Steve can jump in if I need to, but usually, then, we have that reviewed by our engineering consultants, Virgin and I will look, that look for stability and stormwater runoff situations. Because you're right at the top of the hill, it's all going to go down somewhere.
One thing I might say, Mayor, that I know that you and Ray are familiar with, but the rest might not be, that John has been in contact with Bill Garrett.
Garrett.
Yeah, of, from just an I will, and several conversations with Ray, so we are proceeding that part of it. And that was kind of the request I had tonight, that we would give final approval on this, pending this oil sample, and with Ray's approval, so that we could proceed on. I think this requires a public hearing, all right, Steve? So, we could set a date for that, and maybe have that at the next meeting, and have the final by then.
Well, I just got to wondering, after we were out there yesterday, and I looked at the amount that you were going to have to remove to get a flat space to do this, that there is some parallel with the Summit Coats Run site, in that they're worrying about hilltop removal and so on there, and that we really hadn't talked about it here, and I was curious about whether.
I think one of our concepts, and I guess you should, but if you start at this end, our plan was to just gradually, you know, end up up here, so that, you know, instead of making it all this level and coming through there and taking everything down.
of making it all this level and coming through there and taking everything down, we're kinda, you know, just make a roll on up through. But most of our cut comes obviously from this big point that we're sitting on.
Now, is this where we came up to it in the?
No, this is where I pointed out is where the future road could be.
We're down there, we're going down there.
And drove back.
Where were we standing when we took the picture?
Probably about right there.
Okay. Yeah, well, that really.
We were pretty close to that height point there.
Okay.
Kind of like a little.
If you look at the difference between the dark elevation and then the smaller, lighter elevations, don't give you an idea, for example, there's seven forty versus seven thirty-nine.
See, there's seven thirty-eight there.
Seven thirty-seven.
Proposed seven forty, so that actually.
But haven't you already taken some off of there? You've already taken, there, cut in there, so haven't, that section, some places you have, haven't you?
Across the street.
Crossed away.
Across the way, but not on this property.
The only real, the only grading we've done is kind of leveled out for that gravel road here.
Then walk me over here. At this point here where the main entrance is, you're at seven hundred.
Thirty-two.
Seven hundred.
Seven.
And then that's, jumps to seven oh nine?
Seven oh nine, right there.
Right at the gate?
Right at the gate, right at the gates up here, but right at the black top there.
Okay.
And take it down to seven hundred. Now, that seven hundred was existing actually before this was constructed. So we had actual field shots of the elevations of the pavement that we were gonna tie to.
So we're now at seven oh nine and this, these up here at seven forty, seven forty-three, seven thirty-six. So we're talking drops.
The reason this winds a little is to give us, we were coming up at around ten or eleven percent. It was under the city's, yeah, it was under the city's max.
Okay, because then over here, it's seven forty-seven right now?
Correct.
And the first one is seven forty-six, so there's really not any, any real appreciable difference. So this plan really, because we need to get to the other end, you're what, seven thirty? So there's a sixteen-foot drop in the whole area. But that's, distance wise is.
Yeah, this road also.
But distance wise, you're drawing.
Yeah, then goes down and then it comes up. And then goes up, goes up.
Sixty scale.
Oh, yeah, okay.
This is a roughly twenty-two inches.
Underwriting.
Yeah, say twenty inches, sixteen.
Interesting. Okay. So the end result, I guess, the reason I was asking some of the questions here because it does seem like it's a, I don't want to call it a peak, but it is close, but we had one before that was on fill down near River Park Towers. And what they presented to us was if we rebuild the pad to be out of the hundred year and replace the buildings here, here and here, by the time they got to the final engineering and design, they said, well, we're not gonna build a heck of a retaining wall so we, that makes it cost prohibitive, so they essentially had to start all over again. And so that's why I think I'm, I'm a little reluctant without some degree of information from that slope stability and how you're gonna get it to really, you know, recommend it onto council at this. Now, Steve, the question is, is the planning commission public hearing optional at this point for a PUD or is it required?
This language is a little different. It says, if practicable.
Practicable. Oh, I love those words sometimes.
No, this, this finished floor elevation at seven forty, the basement is actually at seven thirty.
Right.
So there's, there's a drive from there to back. We're actually pretty much at grade by the time we come out, all the way up to in here.
Okay.
This one is probably the one that's most suspect at this point.
Okay, so your elevations here are the ground level versus the basement level?
They're, they're actually the first floor elevation, but there is a basement below that, a garage actually below that.
So I look at this one, this is seven thirty-seven and right now this says seven twenty-nine.
The garage is at seven twenty-seven and, yeah, and then it's, the garage comes out at seven twenty-seven over on the corner, we're bitching a little more to get it.
I assume these solids were, are your?
Yeah, that, that actually should be seven twenty-seven, that was a misperception.
Okay.
And it goes down to seven twenty-six right there where the catch basin is.
Right.
And then, and then over.
Okay, yeah, it gets seven twenty-seven. So it has, it's ten feet.
Yeah.
But then up here is the grade of seven.
Correct. And that's, that's.
And so when you come into this parking area over here.
Yeah.
It's seven thirty-four to seven thirty, so they gradually come over.
And these are, as memory serves, around eight percent.
Now, the road width coming through here, is that a twenty-four or, I'm just wondering?
That end over there.
Twenty-four?
That's what he was talking about.
Well, as I recall from what you were saying the other day, Lance, that everybody here has their own two-car garage in essence, right?
Right.
So we are, that parking is for all the units is there and then there is a certain degree, I thought the parking you, you were saying that would be for visitors.
Right.
And I forget the number you lost out, I was ninety-something.
Ninety-six.
I remember. And I didn't know, and those are located in these back areas?
Yeah.
And we're not counting any street parking.
Those are better than that.
I had all those nice towco's on that.
Parking here, here, here. Here.
Okay. So what you're proposing in a way is that, well, it's gotta be a lot wider than twenty-four there if you got parking on both sides.
Yeah, well, this will still be the.
The main width.
The main width.
Right.
And the way it is. And then because of the way this road goes, you know, we have these three here, so we put parking down in here to cover that.
Yeah, this is, that's the clubhouse area and the pool, I presume. Okay. Well, if the public hearing is practicable, whatever that is.
Possibly the reason.
But council has to have one, right?
Correct.
Okay.
There are two things that refer to sixty-day timeframe. Once the city council has the recommendation, the planning commission, they have to hold a public hearing within sixty days. There's a sixty-day note in the planning commission section, however, it says you have to take final action within sixty days of application.
Right.
And hold a public hearing in that sixty-day window, which takes almost a month to advertise because you have to advertise it twenty days in advance. So planning commissions locked into a pretty tight timeframe where council has a little more latitude and I think that's why if practicable was added, I don't, I suppose in a way it could be optional, but there's still time to schedule. Twenty-day notice in advance to all property owners within five hundred feet, if the number exceeds ten, it can be advertised in the newspaper. You have to get to the newspaper three days ahead, so if it's a twenty-day notice, twenty-three days ahead, I have to notify, I would notify the newspaper. So that, that date could be set today, I mean, I could, tomorrow, I could send it in and schedule the public hearing for whatever day you choose to have it.
Well, I know that there are platted lots or areas that exceed the ten, but a lot of it's vacant right now.
Mm-hmm.
It's still, it's owned by the same person, the development company.
Yeah.
And it really, the only, probably the five hundred would be up to the condominiums or maybe a couple of the houses right where the residential lots begin, single-family mean.
Harry Hope's house.
Same owner. Is, are they titled different?
Harry.
Oh, is this within five hundred feet of this?
Yeah, this is right beside my office.
Oh, okay. Well, I just didn't know if we were at legal advertising point or other and if we took into fact that there's no structure, is the ten meaning living units or is it platted property?
It says number of property owners.
Owners, I think, like people.
So if somebody owns everything across the street.
That'd be one.
One.
That'd be one, even though it would might be planted into others.
One of my questions would be with, with the way the schedule works and timing, is it necessary to have a public hearing for the planning committee and turn right around and have one for council? Because council takes a lot of all the stuff. So I'm losing.
I know. Well, and the key issue here really is not the public hearings, although they're important, it's this soil stability issue because it means you do the project or you don't do the project as desired, or you have a lot more expense in stabilizing soil.
I thought, I thought we ought all agree when I say we, probably just you and Ray and me and us, that we had had a letter that said, because of whether we were behind on this, that we would ask for final approval contingent upon approval of Ray. Since Ray and Burgess and Iple could still come back to Ray.
Right.
Because obviously we don't want to go.
No, I know you don't either and I'm not saying that we get all the way through that process necessarily because I know it can take a while, but at least if you have the initial soil sampling is done, it's at the engineer, they're looking at it within a week or so, i.e. what was our next meeting, they should have at least the knowledge to say, yep, I can go to a final plan here with the data I have, or they're gonna say, I need more data. You know, one or the other, but I would feel a little better that at least a plan has been developed. And sometimes when you get into two different engineers talking about soil stability, it's technical in nature and every, you know. And I think the other point is, you know, from today, I don't know, Steve?
Yes, sir.
I know the fire department has, has looked at this and usually repositioned some hydrants on that lance. Water and sewer was scheduled to come in and see it this week, but, or maybe yesterday, I don't, but I don't know. Do we have any other input from any of the other departments?
Water and sewer department came in yesterday and I think they just made a notation that there was not really enough there for them to review. Plan was just submitted last Thursday, just met the deadline for one week prior to this meeting, so we're just now catching up with departments having input on it.
Right.
As far as that process goes, there's a requirement for a tree commission review and that was accomplished last week. We started that quite.
Right.
Quite a few weeks ago. There's a requirement for a disabilities commission review and I attended a meeting of the disabilities commission last night at the public library and they reviewed the plans. I don't know if you've got their review in writing yet, but that's been completed. A lot of these things are happening, seeing a very short window of time.
Well, we have a short window of sixty days, Steve, too.
So, for example, you could advertise for a public hearing, a second, you know, a second meeting a month from now, essentially, two meetings from now, and still be just within your sixty-day window when everything was finally, was finally done. So just about everything has been submitted, the fees have been paid. I think the only question maybe some of you have is section D under twenty-one oh nine eighteen, engineering feasibility studies showing as necessary, and then there's a whole laundry list of things, including extent of earthwork required. So it sounds like some of the contact between Burgess and Iple and the project engineers is already taking place, so, you know, that, that is in process. I suppose it's just the comfort level that you have of having those finally approved plans in place or not, but just about everything else has been accomplished.
Mayor, I guess the point I was making, if I read this right, you were asking for approval of the concept and everything for the process to go forward, under title twenty-seven of land development is where it comes in, that item D that he just read about the engineering feasibility stage and everything, in which there's a clause in there that says that even if you approve everything, we cannot go forward on any earth moving or anything until Ray, it's all that says we can.
Oh, yeah, we understand that.
So that's kind of clarifies that. That's what I was saying about trying to keep this whole thing moving, so I could get through council in a reasonable amount of time.
A land development permit for earth disturbing activity is a separate item issued by the service safety director, falls under title twenty-seven, as Mr. Rep indicated, so you could approve a project and it may not be built because a land development permit could not be obtained. So again, it's, what comfort level do you have of approving something with contingencies, I guess?
Yeah, you said the borons went up just this week? The borons were completed last, last week and C T L was waiting for me to pull some cross-sections, but they were, my air crew, and he was gonna run the analysis and he goes.
What is your pleasure, board, question?
Well, if it's discretionary for us to have a, a public meeting, a public hearing, it doesn't seem that there's a whole lot of point in voting on it today and then holding a public hearing after later. If council's gonna have to hold a public hearing anyway, we could go ahead and vote on it today and with the contingency about the soil studies being satisfactory.
And I think you have to do something with regard to contingency that the water and sewer department, we may have PTI, we may have to reply and get a PTI, I understand that. We're more concerned on the local, the, you know, the storm drainage, or the same stocks that we carry, all those other kinds of things, and I think those details do need to be worked out. And if we're gonna prove it today, I'd like it, that is a condition too, that we get it through water and sewer, technical review.
I think, Mayor, if, if, correct me, you know, I apply for a PTI, mid-car, division of water and sewer, has to sign that before it goes to PTI.
Sure. Right. It just reminds everybody it has to be done. That's all it does when you put the condition in there.
Okay, well.
Is that a motion?
I would move that we give final approval to this with the condition that it doesn't become effective until after the soil, satisfactory soil work has been done and the soil permits are ready and water and sewer, what plans are, are complete.
Hold a second.
Okay. Discretion now, okay, go ahead.
I just have one thing. I've looked at it in terms of the zoning code, meets the park requirements, setback, lot coverage. I was going through the landscape review process. The way the PUD regulations are written, it says if there's any conflict between them and any other section of the code, the more restrictive section shall apply. In the zoning code, there's a section that says you can only construct one residential structure on a lot. So I know that's, may sound kind of picky, but, you know, to take it to the extreme, there is, for zoning purposes, I believe, one variance necessary, and that is for more than one building on a lot.
I was wondering, Steve, under the PUD, for, for A, B, C, is there gonna be more than one building on a lot?
By definition, that is what a planned unit development is. And actually, the definition of planned unit development is development under more flexible standards, so, I mean, I'm just pointing these things out to you.
You're saying that council also said that you have to compare the PUD to the zoning code and where the more stringent it is you do, this doesn't make any sense, but you're just saying from our standpoint, we probably ought to add to the motion that there's a variance to construct more than one lot on it, or one than one building on an R-three zoned lot?
Um.
In this PUD.
Yeah, I just want to.
Is that what you're saying?
I just want to bring to your attention that you could let it go because by its very nature, a planned unit development is a multiple building project and therefore in some respects.
I kinda like adding it to it though. Because it really follows what they say, no?
Even if it doesn't make sense.
If it doesn't make sense, it follows it.
Yeah, let me see if I can find it, section.
So do you want me to amend it to add that?
Would you read that back? Would you read that back, Melissa?
Add the condition that we're permitting more than one residential structure...
Yeah, I can give you that code, I can actually give you that code section.
...under section number, section section that Steve will provide.
I'll provide it.
I don't know what section it is.
I'll give it to you.
Right, now whoever seconded it has to agree to the amendment.
Yep.
I made the motion.
I second it, I agree.
Whatever. Do you have some more questions here? Did you have some more things?
Actually, it's zoning code section 230310. There shall be not more than one principal dwelling structure and two accessory structures, including a private garage on each zone lot in any zone. So, the P U D regs used to say, those regulations superseded all others, and council amended it a couple of years ago, I think, to say, to actually kind of change it around a little bit, that said, if there's any conflict, the most restrictive shall apply. So, that is more restrictive. I think it just makes sense, a P U D's multiple buildings, but just make sure that that base is covered.
Do you want to just, you have to vote on the amendment, or you have to vote on the whole thing?
We haven't voted on the first one, so you amended it.
Right.
We'll vote on the amended one.
Right.
Right. Everybody moved and seconded here.
Sure.
Are you ready to vote now? Will, okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, everybody's in favor. There you go. Okay. That's all we have for you. What's it doing? Sometimes when they revise things and you rewrite and that, you forget that you have to look at a number of other things in the process, and I think people forget to do it, and you get all these strange things. And you're supposed to be able to approve it. Okay, you fix that. All right, number three is communications. Well, I think we had a bunch of communications, but now I've lost them. Where'd I put them? I had so much of this stuff, I didn't have room for them. Here they are, here. We have a communication, well, this was the shade tree that came separately, and we had Mark Speza, and then we have a communication from Mr. Love doll about a property line change between, in Blackburn Woods. There are two lots that have a shared driveway, and the people don't want a shared driveway.
Which is good.
So, he's asking that we approve a minor change to the final plot.
That's a good change.
Where on this picture is this?
Yeah, second page.
No, I know it's the second page, but which lot are we talking about here? Oh, here, over here where this gray area is?
Yep, yep.
Well, where was the lot first place? I mean, the driveway's in the first place.
Well, what we were doing was trying to limit the number of driveway entrances on North Blackburn.
I know, yeah.
And so, we created one by easement, serving lots two, three, and five.
Where's two, three, and five?
Two and three are here.
Two and three.
And five is here. It must be this thing.
This thing right here?
Yeah.
That twenty-foot easement goes down through there.
Oh, that goes...
It goes between four and five.
Okay, where's Blackburn Road on this thing? Okay.
Yeah, I know, technically, yes, we could get a driveway on the north Blackburn to serve lots two and three.
Well, it's between four and five is what he's, did I say four and five?
Well, if you eliminate this here easement, this easement to create a driveway to go to lot two and three, and let two and three go there, then four already has one, and five would have one, too.
I thought when we were out there, there was a hill, and there was a visibility problem with those two lots going out onto Blackburn.
There was, it was a long time, but you couldn't see around one end of it, can't you?
Looks like another road trip.
Yeah.
If I remember specifically...
You couldn't see around the one corner there or something. There was a curve, and you couldn't see up the one way.
That was our concern. He references something in here. Athens City Street Department has looked. There's no problem bringing in...
Four and five between.
Second paragraph. I'd like to chat with him about that.
Yeah, I can't picture this thing where we're going here. Four and five goes out there.
What we have is this twenty-foot easement here.
Goes there, and they go all the way out there here?
And so, it goes all the here, so then lot two and three, to get into their property, goes down this easement into that, and then they come back out to Larson's Way and out his way. He's saying he's having difficulty selling it because a lot of people don't like this shared driveway.
So, he wants them to come out there.
He wants them to come out then this way.
And then this one...
Twenty-foot easement go away, I guess.
And they just come out on Larson Way?
Steve, do you get a copy of this? See if I'm a person who can read.
No, they'd come out on, they'd have to come out here on Blackburn Road.
Well, not these back here.
Oh, these back here also already come out.
Well, but they, they're the shared driveway.
Well, but these are sharing it, too.
Yeah, everybody's sharing it.
That's a problem. If you're sure driveways, nobody comes up...
People don't want shared driveways. They think it looks like, makes sense, but they don't want it.
Well, you get into, it's a time to put gravel on the driveway.
Yeah, there is.
Do each of you have a copy of the plat?
Yep.
For the subdivision?
Small one.
There was some concern about visibility on North Blackburn Road at the time the subdivision was platted. There are two lots, three lots, that actually have frontage on Blackburn Road, North Blackburn Road, lot three, lot two, and lot fourteen. And have no other frontage anywhere else, on any other public street. There's a, if you look over on the right toward lot fourteen, across lot thirteen, there's a thirty-foot ingress, egress easement, and that's so lot fourteen won't need a driveway cut off of Blackburn, they can come in across the neighbor. Same thing for lots two and three, they come in across lots four and five, and so lots two and three don't have to have a driveway out onto North Blackburn either. And so, that was originally, it was an access management question about, did you want, on Blackburn Road as it was going up, did you want all of these access points very quickly out onto the highway? I think as Mr. Love doll's indicated, that's kind of diminished the value, not only of the lots that have to come in and use the easement to access their property, but the easement itself, you know, is an attachment, say, to lots four and five. There's always going to be a, you know, a driveway to two other houses across your property. I think what he proposes to do is just take that easement, cut it in half, return it to each adjoining property owner, and then lots two, three, and fourteen will have to apply for an opening permit to access Blackburn Road.
He doesn't talk about fourteen at all in here, does he?
No.
In my discussions with Mr. Love Doll, he wants to maintain that one, the reason being it goes back to a lift station. I think we have a utility, we have a line, there's a, so that easement will stay in place just because of the fact that...
But the people still want to be, have another driveway.
I think for, yeah, for right now, he's just talking about vacating the twenty-five foot easement on, between lots four and five.
If, Steve, if you look at lots fifteen and sixteen, what did they go out on to? They don't have frontage on Kimes Lane, and they don't have frontage on Larson's Way. Where is there?
No, they do, because of the right-of-way, the state, the right-of-way there goes all the way to the property line, right at the edge of fifteen and all through sixteen.
Yeah. This, it's not indicated on here, but on the original plating, there's a, there's one driveway access that comes off Kimes Lane, through that very large right-of-way, and goes, it actually is used to access Kimes and serve lots fifteen and sixteen. As a matter of fact, I think that was a variance that was attached with the approval of subdivision.
Okay. So, we're going to go out and take a look at the curves on Blackburn Road?
Well, I'd like some input from the street department or something in respect of what their feeling is, and what it was, because Blackburn Road just gets busier and busier.
Yeah, and it's not an easy one to travel.
It's not an easy one to travel, I think, at all. It's not, it's not up to city standards width-wise, and I think, as you can see from the, there's quite a few lots here that, you know, not with the subdivision, but others that touch it.
They're not the problem, okay. Okay, you can arrange to take a trip?
One other thing I want to point out real quickly, if I may. Revision to a plat, subdivision regulations say that minor amendments will be in accordance with policies and procedures adopted by the planning commission. So, as long as you're considering this to be a minor change, which I believe it is, it doesn't have to go back through the whole, the whole process, because you're not creating any new lots, you're not building any new streets, you're not creating any new water or sewer lines, it's just relocation of a property line. So, in my opinion, it's a minor amendment that can be approved just by the planning commission.
You want to locate it before you approve it? Okay, can check with the street department. Right, that's what we'll do. Let's put that one. Here is, where's Tyler Ridge?
That's that one off of six eighty-two on the right, as you...
Oh, up along, kind of above here, okay.
It started out as, I forget how many lots, and then it cut down to, what, six or seven?
Six or seven, it was made and approved by the health department.
Right.
And this is from the health department.
Well, how many did they approve?
Did they approve any of them?
Well, it says the application is not complete.
He says he's looking forward to moving ahead, so this is just for information, is that right? Are you still doing things there?
Tyler Ridge is a proposed subdivision by Mr. Hoysington. I've checked back through the record, I believe the preliminary approval has expired. I think it's been more than a year since he was here, but he's still trying to develop the subdivision. Part of the problem initially was, or part of the challenge, or part of the concern, was how many lots could be created with private onsite sewage disposal systems? At the beginning of this year, you had a change in the health department regulations concerning soil types and types of systems, so I think this information is just essentially an update for you by Chuck Hammer, who's in charge of the Athens City County Health Department, that his latest review of the proposal indicates these kinds of things for sewage disposal. And essentially, now the health regulations for sewage disposal are driving the number and sizes of lots in subdivisions, outside of town, or just, you know, single lot splits. So, they're, they're the basic building and development agency, actually, outside the city.
Okay, so we don't have to do anything.
Steve, isn't there, isn't there now a requirement that you have sewer, you have the sewage availability certified before you get a subdivision approved?
Since the beginning of the year, what the health department's requiring is a soil survey and a feasibility study presented by the propos, by the developer, even if it's a single lot developed.
I thought there was some change in the state regulation.
Right.
So, that even if we, even if we're going to approve a subdivision, there has to be certification, for lack of a better term, that there is existing sewage available, right?
Yeah, or the ability to construct onsite private systems.
Right.
Chuck Hammer, at the last regional planning commission meeting that the mayor and I attended last week, gave us an update on this. And actually, what the health department is requiring now is design of two systems, a backup, so to speak, in case the first system fails. So, not only are they requiring soil reports submitted by the developer and not, you know, not generated by their agency, they're also requiring that a developer or someone seeking a permit actually provide plans for two different types of systems.
But part of the reason for that was that you can, if money is not an object, you can devise a treatment system that might cost fifteen, twenty thousand dollars to put in for the one lot, and get it approved and everything, and what his concern was, was that if they all, I think it was more by the planning commission, regional planning commission, saying there had to be two options, because otherwise, you'd create these lots that somebody might buy and find out, oh, they have to spend a lot of money to not only put in a system, but to maintain it. So, if there's at least two options, hopefully, one of those is lower cost, and we're not, I guess it's a buyer beware type reaction to it, because it's just like that one we looked at, I believe it was in the Three Mile, and then we looked at it here, the one out by Scatter Ridge that was wanting to be as a hunting property.
Oh, yeah, there was nothing.
And that's one of the ones that triggered that, was, okay, yeah, you do that, but where, you know, how practical is it to put a sewage system in? It may meet the letter of the state law, but it certainly has some other implications to it.
A couple of those types of applications without sewage approval have been processed, and I think I have the language down now, Mr. Hazel's familiar with it, too, that indicates a reference in the deed, so people, at least if there's a title search being done, or you're looking at someone's deed, there's an indication of this. But again, I think as the mayor pointed out, too, sometimes you buy a piece of property, and if someone has, wants to build a half-million-dollar house, twenty thousand dollars for sewage disposal systems, no big deal, but if someone just, you know, for one reason or another, their situation, their life and such, they have to live in a mobile home for a while, twenty thousand dollar sewage disposal system's just not practical, so...
Plus, I think what happens is that in the, thought of the health commissioners, you would then be kind of have much smaller lots and more expensive sewer systems, and so they're trying to avoid that, that they want things more practical.
Yeah.
So, it's still a learning process for the health department and the regional planning commission on implementing these, these new rules.
My understanding, too, from speaking to, to people in this, in southeastern Ohio, is that Mr. Hammer is very diligent in enforcing the new regulations. So, I think people in Athens County should feel good about that, that in this part of the state, concern about the health of the public is the highest concern right now with the health department and with Mr. Hammer. So, there's a little criticism, and as the mayor mentioned, too, there's a little healing out period that's going on here, but, you know, I commend Mr. Hammer for what he's doing.
I think it's, I think it's exactly the right thing to do that he's doing. Thank you, and thank him for the information. The other correspondence we have here is about Holzer, Holzer Minor Subdivision Proposal. Mike Nolan, who proposed minor subdivision, Holzer Clinic.
Hopefully, each of you have a, the latest version of the proposal of Holzer Clinic to...
May eleventh.
To subdivide the land that they purchased out on East State Street into three tracks, one of ten point eight acres, one of fourteen point eight, and one of almost thirty-seven. The past proposal was to have tracks one and two be a little smaller in area and cut them off essentially from access to the Hocking River. There was a concern in respect to review of the land development ordinance about storm lottery... detention then for development on lots one and two. In effect, they would have to detain stormwater on-site, as opposed to being able to use the area that's out in the floodway, as essentially their stormwater detention area. So with, with that concern expressed to the owner, they have come back with this proposal to subdivide the tract into three. There's an indication of an already dedicated right-of-way across lot two, and what they indicate is a future easement across lot one in order to access track three, which is essentially just a residual tract that probably won't have development, but everything out there has potential, as we've seen today. So what they're trying to do is assure that there will be access to track three, and they actually do, I don't know if you got in that packet of information they made up, a very extensive development and maintenance agreement that goes along with that proposed easement. So this is, this proposal related to a private road that may become a public road has a little more substance to it than some others that you may have been reviewing. I know discussions with Holzer Clinic too, their, their intent is to develop a road that meets city specifications, and then to request that the city then take over that road for public purposes, so.
Is, Steve, is this east of the overpass?
Yes.
Yes. It would essentially be the mirror side of the Renzelli property, if you use the highway to split it.
Okay, so the motel eight is farther to the east, yeah?
That's correct.
No, it's, it'd be to the west.
To the west.
Oh, okay.
Yes, to the west.
Motel eight would be down here, right next to it would be the three office buildings, and then would be track two, track one, track three.
On our site visit to the Renzelli property yesterday, when we exited the highway and you were able to make a continuous right turn on East State Street and come back into town, that point is about where, we'll see, where it says P O B, point of beginning, track one. Probably right down from the end of the word tract on track one, that's where the ramp comes off.
Okay.
So when you headed back in, that's when you saw, well, right there where it says Hocking River Properties?
Yeah.
That's where the three office buildings are.
Over here, yeah.
Yeah, and then just to the back west, or to the left on this drawing of this, is the motel, and then you have Autotech.
Autotech.
And you have another large parcel that's under land contract at the moment. Actually, the one that's under land contract is the one you're seeing right there where it wraps around, where it says James B. Hayes.
Okay.
Yeah, so this is, this is way, this is the far end. You can also see the line right there that indicates the current extent of the city corporation line, that runs down right through the middle of track one, so if you've been hearing some discussion about-
The annexation.
The annexation, that line basically goes down through the middle of the proposed Holzer Clinic, and that's why they would like to annex, so they don't have a line.
They want to annex the whole thing, track three, two, or just this?
That was my recommendation, too.
Are you sure they take the whole thing?
They're willing to do that.
So.
They have water and sewer already there.
There are manholes and fire hydrants out in that area, yeah.
But the lines are already up?
Yes. Yeah, there's a lift station up.
Right, almost in front of the, here.
Yeah, and in the case related to annexation, because the planning commission is kind of like extraterritorial, because you, you're working in the city and within three miles, so, you know, for these purposes here, that, that line is not nearly as important as it is for development.
Almost all track three will never probably be developed, it's too low, it's not part of the, it was the barrel pit of the Clomar, really.
Oh.
But my thought of it was, was for any reason you ever wanted to go that way, but I also remember, you may remember the Days Inn situation, where they left part of it out?
Right.
And so then they proceeded to put big advertisements and signs and such up, but I don't really want that potential either.
It could go there, nothing else, but that'd be a good place.
It could go there, so I was trying to avoid that.
Big balloons, too.
About this?
Yes.
Sure. I respected Mayor Hendrick a great deal, and I think the city over a lot that doesn't know, that happens to be a thing that I found when I went to her, and we had one of our major disagreements. I wanted her not to allow that in there, I saw what they did, and I thought it was not the way to do it, and she wouldn't like it. That's one of the few times that I was wrong.
Wow, that's odd.
I wasn't against the idea of a sign, I was against the idea that she took that and she made that exception, which didn't make sense. Because sooner or later, if you're gonna have to have a sign, you know you're gonna be very scared for the safety reasons.
Yeah.
I'd like to reemphasize Mayor Abel's concern too, about, in the discussion about track three probably not having development potential, but just as soon as you say that, someone will come in and do it, so just as in-
You can build it on stilts.
Well, if you have enough money, if you, if you don't care how much money you put into something, you can build anyplace, you know, if you want to spend the money.
Well, I want to ask Holzer at the time, if they, when they get to annexation, would they want that zoned out, because I would be willing to zone it open space.
Yeah, because it's a-
So what they're doing is they're safeguarding the development potential of lot, of track three, even though it's probably very slim, but it's still there, and so what you've done is protected any future owner of track three, to guarantee that they can access their property in a reasonable manner.
Yeah.
So this has been presented as a minor subdivision. I guess I just need to know, if you want me to go ahead and work, work them up and have them approved as minor subdivision, then I can have the mayor or the service safety director sign off on it. That's up to you. But that's what they're, they're requesting, just the minor subdivision of land, with, with all these addendums and additions that they have here that guarantee an assurance that deeds, covenants, and restrictions will be contained in recorded documents regarding access and utilities.
And contention on their actually going through with their access road plans?
Yes.
Yes.
That's, yeah, there have been extensive discussions over a long period of time regarding that.
Yeah, they'll have to do that even for their own access.
Yeah, they have to be able to get to themselves. This easement, they'll be showing, future easement, essentially goes through their parking lot, so their parking lot, it's up to the front part of their parking lot, so it'll go, they have, they have to develop that area anyway, in order to be able to, to use that portion of the lot.
Well, so if they develop something later on track three, people could just get to it through their parking lot?
If necessary.
Well, they could just keep going.
But there's the potential for the development of, you know, another road-
It would just go like that, or even-
A public road. And that's their full intent, that's what they've expressed to us in meetings before. What they want to do, actually, just so you know, they're, they're trying to negotiate with all the property owners to move the, the access point and limited access fence that's down by the motel now, up closer to their site, but it takes a lot of work between the property owners and ODOT to actually move that. And then they will necessarily then have to provide access back to everyone else, the motel, Autotech, and there'll be a real road there, instead of just a private easement. So this will work out, if it can be negotiated, it'll work out well for everyone.
Okay, do we need a motion on this for him to go ahead, or not?
If it's a private sub, or a-
Minor?
Minor subdivision.
We don't have to.
We don't have to.
We have to tell him that we agree with what he said.
It looks good.
Okay.
No.
No, we don't have to do that. We told him it looks good, and so he can do, go ahead and do that stuff that he wants to do. Well, I've lost the agenda now. Okay, announcements and other business, next meeting is what date?
June 7.
June 7.
June 4.
Oh, opportunities for citizens to speak, and, and there's a, there's a citizen-
I hear a great sample question.
I'm sorry, I, they, see, they stole my agenda. They stole my agenda, here, no, I have it, I have it. You're ready, go over there and tell us who you are, though. I didn't do that, the mayor wanted to keep her from talking, I think, that was his fault. He pointed me the wrong way.
My name is Joseph Richard Sligo, and I come here having watched a lot of this through the Athens News, and letters to the editor, and all sorts of things that you can get when you're outside some seventeen hundred miles away. And I've tried to keep up on it as much as I could, and I appreciate the offer to transport me with your site visits, I'll be able to go to the next one. I missed that, I had too much to do, I need a secretary to take care of my schedule. And I asked your, your secretary, and she said she didn't know anybody, I mean, she does this, and it's hard to find somebody that I need, I need almost like a chief of staff, sometimes. Let me, and I'm not bragging, I'm telling you something else. I see from a distance something that's going to happen, and I noticed somebody making some remarks, which I got on tape and listened to, some lady appeared and made extensive remarks about the development and the direction it's taking, and I'm sympathetic to some of this and not others, but let me tell you what I'm leading up to very quickly, this won't take long. You're going to hire a planner, and someone is accusing you, the planning commission and the city administration, of playing a fast and loose game. I think the record ought to show that we have talked about this for years, I have been a concerned citizen about having like an engineering division to review what you're doing, to help you out, and I don't see that that way, but the public may, and that's unfortunate, because if you'll recall, there were recently some incidents that occurred with the code office. And I know Ms. Carter for many years, and I know that office, and I've been around here, and I listen and I learn. And she wrote the letter, and Mrs. Sligo reads the Athens News when I don't catch her, and what happened was, she wants the Athens News to stop coming to the house, I says it's not going to come until you leave, I subscribe to it, I actually pay forty dollars a year. She says, oh yeah, I did read it, and then I pitched it in recycling, that's what we have in Arizona, she says, I remember, oh yeah, that letter by Teresa, I can't remember her last name, well, naturally, it was the letter of the Teresa Carter vote. Let me tell you about the letter, I had nothing to do with it, but when I saw what was happening in these exchanges, and unfortunately, letters to the editor don't have a correction.
Yeah.
They can say things, and then people take it as fact, and she did an excellent job, and I complimented her, and I sent her a memo from the both of us, and I, and I think that's the kind of thing that has to be done. I have one rule that I would suggest to you, always act as a board as if you're in a fish bowl. Nothing is secret. You have your executive sessions in certain groups, that's permitted, and that's correct, it can be abused, we have a problem with it in Arizona like you wouldn't believe, they can't get used to the idea of open meetings, they're having a lot of trouble with school boards and city governments, and I watch that. Always act as if you're in a fish bowl. The problem is, there are so many people out there that can make criticism, you would spend all of your time answering them. Always answer the important ones first. For example, that attack, it was an attack on the people and the integrity of the people in the code office. Now, that was unfortunate. And, see, I am a member of two parties, I am a citizen, I'm a taxpayer, and I'm interested in government, and I hate to see government get a lousy reputation for not caring about people. I think you do. I don't know whether it's because I'm aged and have a cane, but I've found nothing but courtesy among the staff, they, they go out of their way to explain, and when I report something, they look into it, and I don't think it's because of me. I go to neighborhood meetings, and they say, I say, do you keep a record, do you have notes, can you say I complained here and you didn't, well, no, the, the first thing you do is you build your own file. I want to tell you that I admire what you're trying to do with this development, and it's not going to be over with this next development, the next one, you're gonna have it forever, because people do not want development, they don't want to change. For example, if I were to suggest to you that someday Lancaster Street will have all those houses torn down, and there will be apartment houses, quality apartment houses there instead, that might make sense, you see, but I can't tell you that now, because it's not politically correct, and people don't like it, but when I'm dead and gone, I predict that's going to happen, because it makes sense. It's one of those nice places that you could develop beautiful apartments, high-class apartments, you could combine lots between Mound Street and other, what I'm driving at, I think you should be complimented, and I don't apologize for you, but I'm simply saying, make sure you know the facts and get the records when you criticize the governmental units. And sometimes they are arrogant, and sometimes they're a nuisance, but actually, it's the best thing we got, it's like Churchill said, democracy's a mess, but we got any better? Actually, no. I want to thank you very much for listening to me, and I hope to be able to come to some of your meetings, but I'm not up to doing it as much as I can, as I've had in the past. But I, I appreciate the fact that over the years, I have watched you be more aware as a group about the council and back and forth, and I think that's good, and you're on the right track, and when we someday have an engineering building, we will fix this place between here and the garage. I'm waiting to when I get hit, and they can put a, overpass and name it after me, thank you very much, bye.
Thank you, Joe, but I have to take exception to one thing, I don't like you describing yourself as elderly, we were in school together, you know, and I-
Well, you know, when I said I was old to a bunch of young people, one of my neighbors came, she says, you're not old, I said, how old do I have to be for that? And she said eighty, that was years ago. Now, eighty, it's eighty-five, it's ninety. Thank you very much.
Okay, now we're at announcements and other business, and our next meeting is whenever June, whatever she said. And do we have any other business? I look at Steve, 'cause every time I've done that before, he leaps up out of the chair with the stagger paper. Okay, okay.
Uh-oh, gave him the door.
You might want to consider, maybe at your next meeting, talking about possibly a task force to review the sign orders.
Good idea.
It's getting, you can see this gets a little more complicated, and it's very, it's a point where especially the business is very concerned about it, but citizens are too, because it has visual impact.
We were attacked.
Maybe go with this kind of piece of me on, I've tried to give you some examples, it might, it might be a good-
I think that's a good idea, because it, there are a lot of things, we were attacked by those animals yesterday on our way back, those, those big animals attacked us, didn't they? Well, you have to keep, you have to keep changing it.
It was the dinosaurs.
It was a dinosaur that were attacking us, and there was a bird that was after us.
There was a bird, and then if you go out, all of those birds, there's another one.
Another bird?
No, another bird.
Another app, okay. The minutes of the last meeting, I need someone to-
I will move to accept the, approve the minutes on May 3.
Everybody was here except Pig.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, those are approved now.
It's Harry's turn.
What do you move, Harry?
Oh, well, I guess I move to dismiss the meeting.
Okay, it's one minute to four, but that box says four. It says four over there, and it says one minute over there.